Joining us shortly, but the meeting of the City Council is called to order at 6:30 PM. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Eber is running late. Counselor Holland?
Present.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Sheldon's absent. Counselor Blum?
Here.
Counselor McGuire?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is Audience Participation. I noticed a few people signing up, so when you come up, you'll have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. And first up is Lori Hoffman.
Hi. My name is Lori Hoffman. I've been a resident of Cherry Hills Village for 31 years. Like most of you, I enjoy the life I've had here, my neighborhood, my neighbors, the easy access to trails and open space. However, on March 11th, my husband and I were quite surprised to find a surveillance camera was installed in our front yard. The street we live on runs north and south. The camera was installed at the north corner of our property. It points south, therefore, the entire length of our land is under surveillance. All of our comings and goings are now tracked and logged. All visitors to our house are recorded, how often they come, how long they stay, whether we're home, whether we're gone. It's all recorded now. This extensive surveillance is deeply troubling and disturbing. There are many different types of properties in Cherry Hills Village. Our neighborhood is Zoned R5. That means our lots are moderate in size and our houses all face the street. They are not set back far from the roadway. This multiplies the problem when a camera is placed in someone's front yard. We are not on a corner lot, therefore, we cannot avoid this type of surveillance by just accessing our property from around the corner. If we back up and not just look at our property, but the street we live on, just eight doors to the north of us, there is already a flock camera. Eight doors to the south of us is a large piece of property owned by the city. Please note that also there is the possibility of unintended consequences by the location of where the camera is now placed. There are very few streets that parallel each other closely in the village, but ours is one of them. When people realize this is a surveillance camera, if they wish to avoid pinging this camera, it's simple to jog two houses over, go down the block on Dexter, and then just go along their way. This serves to encourage traffic to divert from our street over to Dexter, something which I'm quite certain the residents on Dexter do not want. In summary, the current location of the surveillance camera is deeply disturbing because it results in an unwarranted level of surveillance on our family and might cause unintended consequences. There's already a camera on our street, eight doors up. Luckily, the solution is simple and inexpensive. Flock cameras are cheap and easy to move. The city owns property eight doors to the south of us. I think this is an excellent candidate to look at a proper place to relocate this camera. Thank you.
Good, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you mention your address, so I know where you're.
I'm in the 3900 block of Dahlia.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman.
Thank you.
Next up are, do each of you want to speak separately? Okay, Steve Struna, please come up and state, and Susan Struna, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Steve Struna. We're at 2280 Cherry Hills Farm Drive. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for serving the village. Susan's passing out a little packet. It has a photograph of our home and fence along University there, 2280 Cherry Hills Farm Drive, formerly 4949 South University. We'd love to replace that fence. We'd like to replace it along the existing fence line, along the sidewalk, take advantage of the old historic pillars that are currently included in the wooden fence, so it's brick pillars, wooden sections, brick pillars, wooden sections. Again, we'd like to replace the wood with a combination of stucco and brick to match the fences, our neighbors to the north and our neighbors to the south. But the existing rules make it impossible to do so without sacrificing a lot of the mature trees along the line there. So we think there are numerous examples of homes like ours along Bellevue and along University that have the same situation, dilapidated fences, existing code makes it difficult or impossible to replace because you sacrifice a lot of mature trees and you have to do the kind of setback things. And we have an estimate to do it with the setbacks, about $360,000. That's three years ago, presents some hardship, and that doesn't include re-landscaping and irrigation. So we'd ask you to consider our home as one that's, I think, representative of similar situations around the village and could benefit from a rule change that would allow us to replace the fence along that existing line and take advantage of the old historic pillars that are currently there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And of course, the fence ordinance is on the agenda for consideration tonight, so thank you. And last is Chris, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, Chris Blair, Chris Blair, please.
Actually, I'm not sure I have anything to say except Jay was going to be bringing up a revocable encroachment agreement.
It is on the agenda for tonight, yeah.
Yeah, we can allow you to speak during the presentation if you'd like. Okay, perfect.
Great, all right, thank you so much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak or say anything? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda.
I would like to have.
Pull your microphone down.
This is next week, so I'm sorry. The contract for the computer services, I'm sorry, I don't have my agenda.
It's the item 6D.
6D removed from the consent agenda, please.
Okay, we've removed item 6D.
B is in void.
D is in dog. Yes.
Okay. Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6D as in dog.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 6D, Counselor McGuire.
I'd like to ask the city's attorney to explain to us the changes that were made to the indemnification provision, please.
Yes. And I'll ask Clerk Gillespie to chime in if need be, because this occurred in my absence with my associate, but I, my recollection and understanding is that the final determination was to remove the indemnify provision in the first part. Let me just get there. It's section nine, I believe.
Nine, I believe. It was on page nine of 17.
Right. Right, so the contractor agreed to hold the city harmless but would not indemnify the city for all claims and liability on the premise that they wouldn't be able to defend themselves if the claims came from the city based on the contract. But they did agree to indemnify and hold harmless the city against third party, all third-party claims. It was a minor, minor change.
So it just carved out claims from the city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions or concerns about the contract? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda, item 6D.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Clerk Gillespie, is that sufficient, or would you prefer the recommended motion on the that was on the?
No, I think that's sufficient. They've signed it on their side, so we don't expect any changes. Thank you.
There are no items, we've taken care of the items removed from the consent agenda. There is no unfinished business. Moving on to new business, and the first item up is Council Bill 2, Series 2024, amending Section 16-3-120 of the Municipal Code to amend certain fencing requirements on first reading. Director Workman.
Your Honor?
Oh, yes.
Mayor, before we start, I realize in reading this, my house is one of the lots affected by this amendment. So I think in theory I do have a conflict of interest, but I believe I can consider this without prejudice.
Does anyone on council have concerns about Counselor McGuire? No, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And we do have, yes, we do have a quorum, even though Counselor Eber is not here. Okay, Director Workman.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and members of City Councils. Nice to be back before you. As was just identified by the mayor, the next item on your agenda is Council Bill 2, Series 2024, amending certain fencing requirements on first reading. This presentation, the associated materials in your packet are intended to reflect changes to the city's fencing ordinance as desired by City Council. The council held a study session in June of last year where council broadly discussed the city's fencing requirements. During that study session, council primarily focused on landscaping required with fencing, fencing located in the properties between Colorado and Albion and north of Mansfield, and the opacity requirement in the R1 Zone District. In, in October of last year, council discussed some specific changes to the fencing ordinance that are reflected in the proposed amendments before you this evening. Broadly speaking, there's kind of four categories of changes. One change relates to the removal of certain landscaping required with fencing. One change related to the addition of properties to Area 6. And one change related to the addition of illustrations to further clarify what areas are governed by the different fencing regulations. And then there's some minor text changes for clarity. So the first set of amendments are to the table. The amendments are highlighted with those red clouds there. First one in the upper left-hand corner creates a reference to two images that will be added to the code to further clarify. And then Area 6 includes those lots that are south of Hamden, north of Mansfield, east of Colorado, and west of, of Albion? Is that right? I think so.
Yes.
Yeah. And it also, the real, it adds those items, but then it also removes the landscaping requirement for those areas in that Area 6, which is basically Clarkson, Happy Canyon, and then those double-fronted lots east of Colorado. As part of this, there are no proposed changes to Area 5, which is in the setback from the lot line that's state highway, which University, Bellevue, and Hamden would be. If council desires to make amendments to that, we certainly can discuss that. We could be, we as staff could be directed to bring those amendments back before council, but they're not proposed before you this evening. The next amendment would add this illustration showing what we would call an interior property and the associated areas for fencing in there. The next image is what we would call some version of a corner lot, whether that be a state highway, a, those Clarkson, Happy Canyon, or Colorado, and also adjacent to a park, trail, or open space. Those images, again, would just help clarify where certain areas begin and other areas end. As it relates to some of the minor text amendments, in the next three or four slides here, you'll see the additions in underline and the removals with the strike through. So in this particular portion of the code, it is just clarifying a typo, adding the S at the end of fences in that last sentence there. The next one is to clarify language related to opacity for gates, clarifying it to read, "The gates have a maximum opacity of 25%." This next one here is to be consistent with other sections of code, to add the word 10 and then the number in parentheses to reference the height there. And earlier this year, in January, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard these amendments. They unanimously recommended that council approve the proposed changes. Staff would like to note that as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission discussion, that they discussed the merits of requiring surveys prior to final inspection, and after a lengthy discussion, they voted four to three to make a second motion to council. The motion, I quote, "I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that City Council consider imposing a regulation that would require a boundary survey prior to final inspection for the work, such as a fence or other structural improvement that adds to the footprint of a structure that requires a building permit. Based on the discussion during council's retreat earlier this year, no changes to the current process for surveys or surveys related to fences will be proposed by staff." With that, that would conclude staff's presentation. Certainly are available for any questions you might have, and the recommended motion is on the screen in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Workman, and let the record reflect that Counselor Eber is now present. So I would entertain some discussion about the fencing ordinance.
Anyone? I've got a question. I thought, I thought it was kind of odd language when we added in for that Area 6 to deal with Colorado. Why wouldn't we have said east of Colorado, along east, east of Colorado, north of Mansfield, and south of Hamden? As opposed to going, because it almost seems like now, it basically is talking about the entire lot. It applies to that entire lot as opposed to, because isn't the issue that we're talking about is along Colorado? It's just, just that portion, that fencing portion, right?
Correct.
Of Colorado.
Yeah, that is certainly the intent. If there's a way we can clarify that, we'd certainly be open to that. The reason.
I just want to make sure I'm not missing something, because by sitting back and just saying, hey, it's this, it's this lot line right away along Colorado. But as it is now, it's basically saying, we're talking about the whole lots. I mean, that's basically what this is applying to, it's the entire lot. It's basically saying.
Are you asking, are you asking why do you have to mention Albion at all?
Yeah, why do you have, well, why, yeah, why do you have to mention Albion at all? Because that's the thing that at the end of the day, it's like going, hey, it's, it's east side of Colorado, north of Mansfield, south of Hamden. Doesn't that cover it?
The.
Unless I'm missing something, and I could be.
No, no, I don't, I don't think you are. The intention was to create clarity by adding Albion, to limit it to those homes that have the double frontage, so that somebody in the future couldn't say that it applies to everything that's south of Hamden, north of Mansfield, and east of Colorado.
Like Rob.
Right.
Rob can't come in, because he is east of Colorado, north of Mansfield, south of Hamden. But he doesn't back up to Colorado Boulevard.
That was the, that was the intent of having Albion in there.
That's why it includes west of Albion, so that it's clear that it's just those lots that are between Colorado and Albion.
So, yeah, I get it now. So in other words, because what we say is we say, you know, we say south, line for south Clarkson Street, east cap, east Happy Canyon. So it's really the east side of Colorado Boulevard, north of Mansfield, south of Hamden.
But, agreed.
Rob would be out then in that situation.
Sorry, Rob.
Anyway, and it's fine, it still does it the way you want. I just, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something, because I looked at that several times. I thought, what the hell am I looking, missing here? So that answers that question. I guess I don't have any other questions with regard to the new language, but, you know, every time we read one of these things, it generates other questions. So I've got other questions that are not germane to the changes. So I'll let people talk about the changes, and I'll come back. How's that?
So I would like to bring up, I, I'm still struggling a little bit with, as the Strunas so eloquently put their situation, and more generally speaking, I'm struggling with our treatment of properties that are adjacent to state highways. And so I, at the risk of being. And so I, at the risk of being kind of crazy woman, I went out and took a couple of pictures, and so I wanted to pass these out. And after we're done, I'm happy to show them to the people in the audience as well, but... And I think there's a couple of extra copies in case staff wants to look at them. So this, these pictures are taken along Bellevue today. The photo at the top, the very first photo on the top of Page One, does not meet our current, these current fencing code requirements. From looking at the RapMap GIS, it appears that this wall is built directly on the property line. It's not four feet back from the right-of-way, and it doesn't have those little indention things. The picture below it, the second picture on Page One, does comply with the current code. Turning the page, all of these next pictures, or they're of similar fences, they also comply with the current code. You see, in the fourth picture, they have the indention with the landscaping. These are on Bellevue. I'm not real sure, the Strewnas did reach out to me, and this isn't really specific to their property, but they did reach out to me, and one of their first questions was, "What are you trying to achieve?" And I really found myself kind of struggling to answer that question along the state highway. And so I would pose that to all of you. What are we trying to achieve with this regulation on, along state highways? Is it that we don't want the, the wall effect? I feel like on a four-lane highway with a turn lane in the middle, having brick walls or fences on either side doesn't feel as much like a tunnel as it would if it were built on either side of a 10-foot trail. So I understand the trail concern. The highway concern's a little bit different. If it's purely aesthetic, then I start to worry that, wonder whether that's really our role here. And I, it becomes very concerning to me that we would effectively be telling people, even the people on the top picture of Page One, if they needed to repair their wall, they'd have to cut down all of those trees that you see in the picture, because they'd have to set the fence back four feet. Or they'd have to build those indentions, and they'd have to take out mature trees there and put trees on the other side of the fence, which clearly from the later photos are practically impossible to maintain. And so I'm wondering what we're trying to achieve and whether we're achieving it with a policy that requires people to, to, you know, make such drastic changes. So that's question one for all of you to contemplate. And then the second thing is, is there, what would we consider, what would you consider allowing people to build on the property line of a state highway? In these other areas, there's usually a sort of a condition. You can build it on the property line if it's at least this much opaque, or no more than. And if you want it to be solid, you have to set it back. On the state highways, there is none of that. You can't build it on the property line, period. You can either build it four feet back in a straight line, or you can build it with the setbacks, but that's it. Is there anything that we would consider allowing someone who backs up or abuts a state highway to construct? What if it, you know, wasn't 100% opaque? What if it wasn't eight feet tall? What if it, which is allowed under this code? What if it, you know, does it make sense to say you have a higher threshold, you can replace 50% of your fence without complying? I don't know. These are, I don't know that I have the answer. I'm just not, I don't feel like I'm really comfortable with where we've landed as it relates to the state highways. I'm comfortable with everything else.
Madam Mayor?
Maybe we can start, maybe we can start with your first part of that, which is, because I don't remember what we, what the, what, I don't even know if I was on council at the time. I don't know what the intention was. I don't know if the director knows originally what this was for, or what the rationale was for. But maybe we can start there and find out what we do think. Because if it's aesthetics, you know, the other fences that you show that are in compliance look like hell. And to be honest with you, I always sit back and say, you know, I have very few people ever call me in all the years I've been on council or any of the commissions. The one thing that people have called about is people in Greenwood Village saying, "How can Cherry Hills allow that to happen?" I've actually probably had a half a dozen calls, which isn't a lot. But given the fact that I don't get calls on anything else, for me, it's a lot. I sit back and go, "It's an eyesore. Why don't you people do something about it?" So just from an aesthetic perspective, I don't think it can be necessarily aesthetic, certainly at least along Bellevue, right? But anyway, to the director, if you, if you've got some input there.
No, I was just going to add that the, this current requirement of fence ordinance predates me. So we could find out if there was rationale at the time it was adopted, what that rationale was. But I think that I would be safe in saying that it mostly is an aesthetic attempt to try and soften the buffer along those state highways. There's really not another good reason other than the aesthetic. So what I was going to mention is, if council wants to revisit that, rather than try and solve that tonight, I would offer, why don't we earmark a future study session or a future council discussion where we can come back with some analysis and some examples, and maybe some alternative, alternatives to the current version that council can then discuss and, quote-unquote, sink your teeth into.
I think that's a good suggestion. I guess I would just, do, as council, do you want to continue that discussion, or are you...
Well, I think it's worthwhile to continue, but let me just ask if I can as well. The land outside of a fence at Cherry Hills Farm, is that city land, or is that, is that, is that, is that right-of-way? Or is the lot lines go out for those properties on, on that side?
Which side of University?
On the, on the, on the east side, Cherry Hill Farm, not west, but east.
It's...
But just, that's the farm.
My understanding, I mean, I should back up. First of all, the fence is a good deal farther back than anything in these pictures.
Right.
So, and it does have the jogs in it, and so on and so forth.
No, no, but there's a lot of land. That's what I'm saying is, is that on that side of the street, there's a lot more, there's a lot more land. And the same question, if I, if I was asking about Greenwood Village, which is on the other side of Bellevue, there's a lot more land that's landscaped until you come to that fence. I'm just curious if those circumstances are the same as, for instance, on the north side of Bellevue. I mean, in other words, in terms of who owns the land and what's...
So I think there's some, probably some interest. I would guess that places like Cherry Hills Farm, and if you, up at Sunset, the HOA probably owns the wall, not individ, because it's consistent across all the homes that...
Right.
And then I suspect, if I had to guess, that the HOA maintains that. Bellevue, each of these, every lot has its own different fence. And you can see in the, in the pictures on Page Three, these lots are actually adjacent to each other. This wooden fence is built on the property line with the setbacks. And then this concrete wall is a neighboring property that's built four feet back. So the fence line darts in and out, and when you see the consistent fence line, for example, on the Greenwood Village side of Bellevue, west of University, that's also consistent, and it has the green space and the trail. And my understanding is that the green space and the trail is all maintained by Greenwood Village. And then there's some contention around who is supposed to maintain the wall in that situation.
I think typically you see a difference where there's an HOA.
Yes.
Our neighborhood, which backs up to Clarkson and Quincy, we have a fence that is maintained by the HOA, but my lot backs up to Clarkson. My lot actually goes, I think, 15 feet beyond the fence towards Clarkson. Now, I don't have use of that. I mean, I guess I could use that land, but effectively not, because it's beyond the fence. Though I do pay taxes on that, but...
Well, and that, I mean, I, that point has been raised that, and I understand legally that it isn't a taking, because you do still own the land. But really, when you're, when we're taking existing fences and forcing people to effectively give up four feet of their, use of their lot, they do still own it. I understand it's not legally a taking, but you don't have, you no longer really have the use of that space. And so in my mind, there needs to be a really good reason to do that, and I'm not sure that I understand what that is.
Can I jump in real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
The issue we have, and Catherine can confirm this, a majority of our insurance claims are fences that are right on the sidewalk.
Okay.
C.D.O. puts the snow on the sidewalk. We are supposed to take that snow to the outside of the sidewalk. Multiple times a year, we have insurance claims, because those are, I mean, right on the sidewalk. And if, if that's the case, we can't, you know, make the sidewalk safe for our residents, because there's no place to put that snow.
And there's also been damage to fences.
A lot of damage, yeah, because...
So there's that.
You know, you have a foot of snow, and you're plowing as carefully as you can. But when you've got thousands of pounds of snow, you get thrown into those fences. So there needs to be some snow storage going forward where there isn't, because we continue to just have all these issues.
Right.
Well, and the other thing, Mayor, is, is that, and I, and I agree, I think we need to look at this, and I tend to agree with you. But to your last statement, though, hey, they've got land and they can't do anything with it. I mean, that's, that's basically all of our properties where people have fence. The fence is on, is on the setback line, and you don't have use of that right-of-way. I mean, it's there. And actually, it's supposed to be for people to park, and you know, you know how I feel about that. People are putting rocks there to keep people from doing it, trying to take over and draw their right-of-way back in. But a lot of people don't have use of that right-of-way.
Yeah.
I mean, really everybody, right?
Well, no, but that is, that's right-of-way. This is on their own property line. And that right, that abuts the right-of-way. So you are able to put a fence on your property line. But your street doesn't take up the entire right-of-way.
Right, that is right.
And in these places, and you can see, I know the, the Strewnas are in a similar position, but this lot on Bellevue, the first picture, there's a turn, a right turn lane that makes, you can see that there's much more green space between, the fence kind of jogs back off the picture. But the turn lane makes it much closer to the fence than the rest of the road. So there are those kinds of unique scenarios. But that's a really good point, Director Goldie. I'm glad you brought that up. So I think to Director Workman's suggestion, maybe there is some more research to be done. I was on council when this fence ordinance was passed, and I know you were on PTRC at the time.
I was.
Do you have any, I mean, I have my own recollection. Do you have your...
You know, I think my recollection would be that along a state highway, the idea was breaking up the pattern of canyons. Whether, I don't think we necessarily thought differently about a state highway versus any other one. Is, we just didn't want canyons surrounding our properties. And so as a result, that's where we carried forward all of the other requirements of every once in a while having a cut-in, and with a landscaping requirement. It's just, it just looked better than just an ugly wall. The impression was that people would plant things and have a decent-looking aesthetic. And it would be set back enough that frankly, if it was, Bellevue doesn't apply, but the other side would be Hampton, is where you have South Safeting Sun, a wall on the north side, and it ices that area to the north and basically renders that portion of the sidewalk, if there were actual sidewalk, it just renders it useless, because it's iced over. So I think that was, the theory was mostly aesthetics, a little bit of the functionality as well, though. I do think that it wasn't 100% aesthetic. It was based on that trails to the north would get covered with ice in the wintertime.
Okay. Were we trying to...
Well, we were trying to pull up a map and show everybody's property lines and kind of get...
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Where the fence lines fall within there, just to give you a rough idea. But I, I think you are on the right track that asking staff to maybe come back with a special study session on this issue, if you want to.
Yeah, so specifically on the, I think we can move forward with the changes that we have discussed and agreed upon so far. And then maybe we do still need some additional consideration for the state highways, which is what area?
Five.
Or something like that?
Five.
Five. Five, yes.
Can I, I'll just confirm that on streets that back to roads, I mean, excuse me, lots that back to roads, I just want to confirm that that is up to six foot, but because it backs to a road, it has to have opacity, correct?
If it's not in that Area Six, which is Happy Canyon, Clarkson...
Right, right.
Then yes, you are correct.
And it also has to, can it be on the property line, or is that setback again, the at least four feet? No.
I'm pretty positive I know the answer. I just want to make sure that I do. So there's no landscaping associated with that? But six foot is the maximum height, and depending on the height of the fence, there is a maximum opacity. So it could be on the property line. It just, depending on the height of it, we'll have to...
On the property line's okay, okay. That's, thank you.
You know, I, I would, I would also, I know normally we are hands-off on, on aesthetics. However, I think of all the things that have come up over the last seven and a half years, I've probably got more calls about the Bellevue median, about weeds, and even solid concrete medians, where they're growing up around the cracks and things like that. And it is an area that kind of does make a statement to the public about our neighborhood. So I, I guess I'd, I'd ask you to give that some thought, too, about, about the question of aesthetics and to what degree we want to get involved, don't want to get involved, and so on as we look at this highway question.
Okay. So with that discussion, I think...
Well, can I get, can I get a couple of other questions?
Yeah, sure.
And I just wanted to, Director, you know, in your discussion, Point Three, you said these lots are unique in that they are double-fronted lots, frontage on two streets and not on a corner, and warrant additional screening. I mean, Quincy, the north side of Quincy, from Happy Canyon down to, like, somewhere down, down there are basically the same, they're, they're double-fronted lots, right?
There are some, that's correct, yeah.
Well, there's a bunch. It's the whole, basically, all, the whole side of Quincy, north side of Quincy, all those lots. None of them, well, I guess one guy's got a garage that he enters there, but I mean, he basically, everybody enters from a street on the other side.
They do, and right now, those fences are, don't fall within this, and I can't remember exactly, but it's because they're much further from the center line of the road. But to that point, I guess if they ever wanted to try to build their, so if they wanted to build a solid fence on their property line, and I don't know if the, I don't know where the property line is.
That's my point, which is, is as we're looking at this, and I, I'll admit, this, this fencing ordinance, and I think I was on council, too, so I, at the time, and I don't remember. And I know that it, I got all tied up in my underwear then, and I am now. I don't know why. But I just really struggle reading this whole fence ordinance and trying to figure out what it says. But we just want to make sure that whatever it is that we're saying applies, and there's not either a loophole, or an unintended consequence, or something along those lines. Because I just read that phrase, and I'm going, well, those lots are the same.
But I think, I think where that came down was that Quincy has a lot more right-of-way. We have a lot of right-of-way on either side of Quincy.
Right.
That we don't have on Colorado.
No, no, no.
And that's why, but yeah, that's why the fences are so far back, because they are on the property line.
You just want to make sure that the language, though, and like I say, I tried to read it, but I couldn't quite figure out that. It's not, when I looked at these maps...
That somebody could, yeah.
Right.
Somebody say, "I'm double-fronted, too," and...
Exactly. And then the other question I had, you know, looking at the, the new 163120B, you know, 120 table. Those requirements are for new fences or replacements? Is that how that works?
I'm sorry, for which section?
The whole table.
The whole table.
That's correct, yeah.
For new, or if you have an existing fence and you replace it, then you've got to follow the table.
Replace more than 25%.
If you're replacing it within its, exactly.
More than 25%.
Right.
That's correct.
So, and because I was looking at Area 7, and I'm sitting back, and I'm saying, like, you know, for instance, I know that along the trail that's on the, on the south side of Devonshire, and the trail goes east and west along there, comes across, and those are all six-foot solid fences the whole way down that trail. And that's just basically saying that's a grandfather. And if those people ever replace that, they'd have to replace it with only 40% opacity. Is that right?
That's correct. They're legally non-conforming. And if they came in to replace more than 25%, they'd have to meet the current standard.
Right. Okay. And I do think that that's probably a worthwhile thing, and it goes to your point as well, which is to go, are, are we, are we creating ISOs? Because, I mean, those people will never replace those fences, and they're really starting to fall apart. And is that what we want? So that's your, your point, I think.
Yes.
But we do have nuisance provisions, that if at some point we make a determination that that fence just is, actually constitutes a nuisance, something can be done about it that way. I mean, it's not like we're without a remedy, that we're just sitting here watching these things fall apart. I mean, I think that the reason that there is a, if you, there is an out that will eliminate the ISO, or if it gets to a point where we deem something to be a nuisance, and that's really the trigger on a lot of our government action, too, is when it becomes a nuisance, we have authorities. Until then, we don't.
What's your view about that bottom picture?
Don't love it, but it may not be non-compliant. I mean,
Okay, and, and I guess that's the thing.
Yeah.
It's in the eye of the beholder. What's a nuisance, you know, what's aesthetics, et cetera, which is why we tend to stay out of it, but it's, it's a tough thing.
Yeah. At the same time, it was important enough, not just to Cherry Hills Village, but on Bellevue, also to Greenwood Village, they spent millions of dollars to rehab it, and we're in the, we're on the hook to maintain it. So it, it's real, and this is just the other side of the street from a practical perspective.
Right.
Same street, and, you know, same statement, in a sense. So, yeah.
And what's really interesting is that bottom picture, you can't see it in there, but there's a irrigation hose running through there. So they, they're even trying to do something.
The right thing.
And that's
Yeah, they're trying to do the right thing.
That's resulting in.
Is that just west of Holly?
It's, that's basically, yes, that's just west of Holly, and then the, the top picture is just east of Holly. That light is the intersection at Holly, right there.
And that, is that four feet from the turn lane to the wall?
No, I don't think so, no.
It looks close to that.
And it's, that's not, the turn lane isn't on the right-of-way line either, from looking at the GIS map. And of course, that's not exact, so it's hard to say, but there's, I believe there's, you know, a few feet of additional right-of-way there, and that the fence is built on the property line from the satellite photos. Without a survey, you wouldn't know, but, okay. So I think where we are is that we've decided to entertain a motion on the existing changes, and to ask staff to bring back, to take that discussion and some of those suggestions, and to bring back some research around what the goals of this policy are as it relates to the state highways, and perhaps what other, how other cities treat those things as well, and to make some decisions with that moving forward. So, anybody for a motion?
Okay, one more question.
Oh, yeah.
I was just curious, and, and so, we're going to make a motion on those, et cetera. And we kind of, we did have this discussion about surveys at our retreat, and I think, I think as I recall, we're not inclined to do that. But I'm just wondering, though, when we have one of our commissions make a recommendation to council, and we don't take it up, you know, do we feel like we owe an explanation to our committee? I do. I mean, these are volunteers, these people put in a lot of work. I think there's, there's things that we need to do to be able to sit back and say, hey, we appreciate that, here's why we're not doing it. Don't you think?
I would agree. So I guess the question is, we did have that discussion at the retreat, and that is sort of where we landed. In light of this recommendation from planning and zoning, I think we have a few options. We could either reconsider the issue. We can, or we can respond to planning and zoning. I do think some response would be nice to say, thank you, we discussed it, and we don't want to do that.
Am I right that this is an issue separate, though, from our motion here? I just want
It is, yes.
I've gotten a little off-center here, but
It is, but perhaps if, if, when staff goes back to work on the state highway fencing ordinance, if we wanted to somehow reconsider that part, that might also be applicable at that time.
Well, and, and just so council knows, we haven't had a meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission since then, but next time we do, as part of my reports, I will report back to them the general conversation we had at the retreat, and the thought process, and the deliberation that you took. So don't feel like they won't know, or they feel like, you know, that, that you all have ignored that request. We certainly, as staff, will have a discussion with them at their next meeting on why we ended the way that we did. So I, I'm planning to do that. I'm happy to do that. If you want to do something beyond that, certainly you can do that, but, but know that the next time we meet with them, I will have that conversation with them.
So that their meeting was before our retreat?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
The only thing that I was going to say was, at the retreat, we discussed the same issues that they brought up. The cost, does the city want to get into the middle of a dispute? And I apologize, sorry. And it was somewhat of a split decision, is my recollection. We weren't 100% against having the surveys. And it was a split decision at P&amp;Z also, a very close split decision. So
Okay.
That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Great discussion. Is there a motion?
Okay. I move to approve Council Bill 2, Series 2024, amending Section 163120, fences, garden walls, perimeter walls, and enclosures of the municipal code on first reading, and instruct staff to go back and revisit, more specifically, the highway portion of this.
There's a motion? It's been moved and seconded? This is a roll call? Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holan?
Aye.
Counselor Wheel?
Aye.
Counselor Blum?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you very much. Next is Resolution 5, Series 2024, approving a revocable encroachment license agreement with Christopher and Manisha Blair, owners of 34 Charleux Circle, for the installation, construction, and maintenance of certain improvements on city-owned right-of-way. Director Goldie?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you this evening, you have the request for a revocable license. Before we got into the meat of this actual request, I wanted to do a little background. We don't see these a lot, so when you do see these, you know staff has done a lot of consideration, because this is, this is often a last-ditch effort to bring these forward. When there's no other feasible options, there becomes some future management and keeping track of these. So when you do see these, please believe that staff has been working closely with our residents. So a revocable license is a non-exclusive right to install certain improvements. The difference between a license and an easement is there's no property interest in a license. It's just permission to install, in this case, sprinkler, I mean, drainage utility pipes, but unlike an easement, there's, there's no property interest given over to anybody. And so it's revocable. We've never had to revoke one, that I know of. It would only be for health, safety, or welfare that we'd really go in and say, okay, we have to remove this for these reasons. We'd never just say, you've got to remove it. If you're not maintaining it, we may, you know, we wouldn't want to remove it because we believe that the improvement is, is helpful to the residents. So the Home Rule Charter gives, gives council the right to grant permits or temporary use. And this being revocable falls under the temporary use, because there's nothing permanent about it. And as I've said, we typically only use these in very limited situations when there's no other feasible options available. And it's, it's, and you'll only see it a lot with individual residents or HOAs. It's, the license is utilized mostly for private individuals and entities that, that aren't public utilities, don't fall into the use of public utility easements or franchise agreements, anything like that. So in my 20 years here, I think I've seen four or five of these. So we, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what they were, because, again, we don't see a lot of these. A council may, council person may sit for six years and never see one, so, little background. So 34 Charleux Circle, we have been working with the Blairs on this, but this started well before the Blairs were owners of this property. I found documentation of myself actually working on this in 2009 with our code officials then. We worked with the two previous owners before the Blairs. During the ownership of the second owner, the water stopped running at some point. And as you saw in my memo, we believe that the, some pump may have just been put into the floor drain in the home. We have no proof of that, that's just hearsay, but that would be the only answer as to why the problem stopped for a number of years and was no longer causing a nuisance. So since 2022, Code has been working with the Blairs, and I've, and Director Workman and I have started to work with them in the, in the latter part of this. So the Blairs have been very, very cooperative. They had a number of different entities, South Gate Water, Denver Water, the sewer companies, everybody come out. And then they also hired some professionals to try to pinpoint what the actual source of the water is. And again, this, 34 Charleux is the only property experiencing this. This is not a neighborhood-wide issue where the city may step in and look at doing some public infrastructure. So again, that's the reason we are looking at the revocable license in this case.
Can I, you know, real quick?
Yes.
Can I just ask, has there been any water sampling of the discharge?
Yes. We sam, I actually sampled it back in 2009, and our code official sampled it, South Gate Water has sampled it. It is, it's not treated water, it's natural water. There's, so they checked for, to make sure it wasn't a leaking water pipe or anything that had been treated. But yes, it's, it's not contaminated, it's clean water, but it's not treated water.
So it's not chlorinated?
Not chlorinated.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yep. So as, as throughout most of the city, we have very limited underground storm drain system, and in this case, the closest drop box is 380 feet. So our storm drains in most of our neighborhoods are, are just designed to take the snow melt, or rain, but not constant water running, because they're all curb-and-gutter systems where, you know, they're, they're dry a majority of the time. They just, in this case, because this sump pump is running so often in the summer, there's algae buildup and water running constantly, and in the winter, it's ice buildup.
This is 34 Charleux right there.
So this is the general location of where the pipe would run. We do have a little bit of right-of-way behind the curb-and-gutter. We will work with the Blair's contractor once they get all the locates, and we can get an exact location for this, keep it within the city right-of-way, out from under the pavement if possible, and, and run this line via a bore to the drop box. So their sump pump will be connected to that and continually run to that drop box, and then go out the normal storm sewer.
You can't just put it into the neighbor's pool.
So I
I was just going to say it was coming from, but
Yeah. Just a, a quick example, this is the, the last revocable permit we've done in a situation like this. New home was built at 2815 South Albion, which was a vacant property before that. They had to meet the storm water requirements, do a detention pond. Due to the lack of any drainage or ditches in, in this neighborhood, this structure was, this is a lot shorter. This structure was built, it's an, it's a great system to do exactly what we're, we're talking about here, running that excess water without putting it on the street, and it goes right into the storm drain to the east, in this case. So if there are any questions, I can answer those. Mr. Blair is also here, if there are any questions for him.
A question, question, you're talking about installing it by doing a bore underground?
Yes.
So nothing, the curb, and nothing will be touched?
No, it will, it will all be done by bore. Depending on where the utilities are, we were, we asked the homeowners to hold off until we got permission to do this from council. We may have to, if we have to, we'll put a bore pit in the street if the gas line happens to be right at the edge of the street, or something like that, or move the bore pit up into their yard a little. But yes, we will try to not disturb any of the pavement if possible.
Mr. Blair, did you want to, do you have anything to add, or that you wanted to say, or are you just here in case of questions?
Question.
Okay.
I can tell the whole story.
I'm sure it sounds like a real challenge, so.
Can I, may I ask Mr. Blair, real quick, just in terms of the efforts to try and locate where the water's coming from, were you able to do sampling or set up a protocol where they basically did groundwater migration across your property, or how were you able to figure out?
We had a couple of engineers come out, and basically, there's several swales above us that come and meet right at the back, kind of the center, middle, back of our house. And then there's shale right below. We've had not only this sump pump that was going crazy, it has been replaced with a new one. It's still pumping like crazy, and now we can actually visually see the water just coming up constantly. It's pumping every three minutes approximately, and it's pretty much filling up, and then being compressed by the pump, comes back up. Apparently, there is shale right below the house, across the whole property, and that is keeping it from going further down under the house. So instead, it's basically staying right underneath the concrete. If they turn it off, the fear is that water will just come right into our basement. We have a second sump pump that we have added to the far end of the house, thinking, hoping that would mitigate some of this. Hasn't done anything, just created more water.
And are there groundwater issue, or is, is there a groundwater presence on the properties above you? I mean, when you say the swales above you, it sounds like it's coming, blocking up on that swale, and then kind of going onto your property. It sounds like it's, the source might be, because you're on a hill that generally slopes down to the west, anyway.
Yes, we're about halfway down the hill. There are homes on the other side of Charleux, on the west side, that are actually below us.
Right.
And there are several, three or four homes above us, and there are swales that come from it. And, and most of the, of the east side of the circle of Charleux is, is well above us.
Right.
We've thought about, are there any wells, broke, old wells that were on the property? But Mr. Banzbach let us know that he doesn't know of any, any old wells on his section of the property above us. It just believe, they don't, the engineers don't believe it's from a well. It's just constant water coming down through the house.
It's, it's not a surface water issue.
Yeah.
We've looked up there. It's all, it's all subsurface. There's, it's not like the waters, you can, is running from those other homes, hitting those swales and going down. It's somewhere, the, the water is starting subsurface.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm real familiar with your piece of property. I, I grew up just to the west of there on Old El Camino, but my sense is, is that the old, I mean, the original homes that were in that area all were run on wells. And I guess I would just be curious as to whether or not it was properly closed, if they're not using the well right now. I don't think it, I mean, I, I, obviously, we would like to find a way, that you don't have to keep running a, a sump pump, so that you don't have to do this. But if you've done your due diligence on trying to track down a potential source, it sounds like we're now at the point we're at, and you've exhausted your ability to try and figure that out.
Yeah, actually, one of the engineers did Yeah, actually, one of the engineers did in fact review old maps of all of the wells that had been capped and didn't find any that would have been a cause of the problem.
Wow.
And by the way, it is, it is going 24/7 all year round, whether it's the summer, it's, we already have algae out there. But in the wintertime, it really forms a very nice skating rink at the bottom of the hill, right in front of the, one of the driveways of, of our neighbors. So.
And did any of your folks, I know that you said you sampled back in 2009. Has there been any quality sampling more recently?
Yes, we had, it was the Denver Water, I believe, came out.
Yep, South Gate.
And also, one of the engineers did the same thing.
Yeah, they, that was late last year or early this year that there was sampled again.
And no pollutants at all in terms of?
It's great water, very clear.
Wow. I mean, I, I'm sorry that you're dealing with these challenges and-
But for this, it's a great house.
Yeah. Well, and, and yeah, so, yeah, questions?
I had a couple, couple of questions on, on the agreement. You know, the city can terminate it at any time upon protection of public health, safety, or welfare. It's unlikely to happen. But if the city privatized, I mean, if Charlestown privatized all those streets and the right of ways went away, is that considered welfare? I mean, how would we terminate it in that circumstance?
Sorry, could you repeat, if the city did what?
If, if, if Charlestown wanted to privatize those roads, which they actually talked about at one point in time because of the safety and security, you know, the right of ways go away. I mean, right? Right of ways, the streets all goes away. We no longer need a license.
Correct. So if the city would not own it, the city, this agreement would essentially be void, but I think we'd want to officially sort of paper that up. But I have-
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, in other words, that we-
I mean, it would be, there's, there's nothing to, to grant if we, I mean, we cannot extend that if we do not own the property in the first place.
Right, I agree.
Terminate by default, yeah.
Yeah, I don't like terminate.
I understand. So we would take, we'd take some extra steps to nail that coffin shut.
I'm, I'm basically saying, I think there ought to, we ought to be able to have the ability to terminate it under all circumstances. And I'm just saying, would that be considered welfare or public safety? I mean, would that be the basis on which we can terminate it? Or do you need to put something else in there?
I, I would couch it in welfare terms. But, you know, and because the ownership of the public welfare, the stewardship of the public welfare, it actually no longer be the case.
Okay. And then the license, the licensee termination, just, I think this is the case. I mean, basically, we're saying there that the licensee can terminate with the approval of the city.
Yes.
It doesn't say that, but it implies it the way that it's written. It's just, I think the language is kind of awkward.
Well, this has been the standard form for years. But prior to delivery, yeah, they-
No, and I, I get that. I mean, you know, it's, anytime something comes before me that I haven't really read in a long time, you're-
We love it. We love it, Councilor Holden.
I just, it just seems like it's, because you say, hey, you can terminate at any time. But first, you got to come to us and you gotta, we'll tell you whether or not you got to terminate it. I mean, it's, 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 it basically is saying you can terminate it, the licensee can terminate only with the approval of the city.
Well, the city needs to understand exactly what's happening and to decide what to accept and what not to accept.
Right.
Right.
And which then is with the approval of the city.
Correct. Yes. So they can terminate anytime as long as the city says it's okay.
Right. Which, so maybe, maybe for the future, if this is the standard form, maybe you might want to change that. I think it's awkward language for the future.
Okay.
This is our standard.
I'll take a, I'll take a closer look at that.
Two.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Ready?
Thank you. I, a question about the, if the property changed hands, if they sell the, the house, it seemed to me that the way this worked was there would be a decision point about whether we would offer this license to the new owners. Why, I mean, would the ownership change really affect the circumstances? I, I didn't quite understand why that would be the case. Why wouldn't just run with the property until it was terminated?
So a license is not a, a property interest that would typically run with the land and it would just be assigned to the subsequent owner?
Okay, so it's sort of like it has to be renewed at that point.
Or assigned, yeah.
Yeah. Right. Okay, thanks.
May I?
Yes.
Um, this, this question fell right into my wheelhouse. I'll take two seconds. I used to represent the Health Department on environmental cleanup. And I mentioned this comment because I think it's important for all of us to understand that while this is kind of our last ditch result need for us at the local level, we have to be cognizant of whether or not it triggers any other requirements at other levels. The Health Department does have a groundwater management program and a discharge program. And we're lucky that the long story short is that this one doesn't apply and require a groundwater permit issued by the state of Colorado, a discharge permit. But it's important to understand that for residential properties, this lack of a need for a permit only applies in two instances. And that's where it's a single family home, the residential subterranean structure includes an underground parking garage, elevator shaft, or similar significant subterranean feature expected to increase the potential for subterranean de-watering activities to draw shallow groundwater into the discharge. And I'm assuming your house does not have a parking garage?
Well, it does. No, I'm-
A, a subterranean parking-
Subterranean, no, it's-
No, no, it's not.
It does not have an elevator shaft or something similar like that that is drawing groundwater onto the property. Second requirement is that the division has notified the source of the water, i.e. the groundwater has a, has identified the source as a potential significant contributor of pollutants and has provided written notification of this determination as to the discharger. So again, you haven't received anything from as a result. That was my questions about whether or not there'd been any sampling that would indicate there's any kind of a pollutant. So I, I mention it because it's important that we don't cause property owners where we, a, a bigger problem, frankly, when the big boys at either the federal or state level say, that was a great solution of putting it into a, a pipe. But by doing that, you just created a point source discharge or a groundwater discharge. So this literally was as of 2:19 this afternoon. You're in the clear, according to the state of Colorado. And so enough said.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments that I would entertain a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 6, Series 2024, approving a revocable encroachment license agreement between Christopher William Blair and Manisha D. Blair, owners of 34 Charlestown Circle, and the city for the installation, construction, and maintenance of certain improvements on the city-owned right of way. I further move to authorize the city attorney to make such changes as may be needed, to correct any non-material errors or language, or to negotiate such changes to the agreement as may be appropriate, and do not substantively increase the obligations of the city, and to authorize the mayor to sign such an agreement when in final form.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. This is all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, Mr. Blair, I'm so sorry you're dealing with those challenges. And we really appreciate your willingness to work on a solution for your benefit and really your neighbors in the community. So thank you for that. Last is, on the regular agenda, is amending the City Council rules of procedure. And that's Clerk Gillespie.
Good evening, Mayor Brown, members of City Council. This is a follow-up item from your retreat when we talked about public comment procedures and audience participation, public hearings, residents, non-residents, items of the agenda, not on the agenda. So this is the direction that staff has taken from that. And we are looking for direction from you to move forward on any amendments to their rules of procedure. So the, the main changes that are redlined in your packet this evening are distinguishing between allowing residents to speak on any topic, non-residents only on agenda items, and limiting any, no, no allowance of donating time from one person to another. And also just making clear that if we have an entire full room, then council can make the option of reducing time from our normal five minutes. If council directs us to make other changes, we can definitely do that. But these are the ones that are in the red line right now. The main sections that we're dealing with are the audience participation section here, the public hearing section just below that. And then there's just a little bit on the bottom of this page, just referring back to the public hearing section, basically. So those, that's what we have to work with. And I'm happy to take any direction.
Thank you. So this, if you'll recall, was discussed at our retreat. I think this accurately sums up the gist of our discussion, but open to any comments or-
I just had one question, though. Anytime we've had people outside of the community, from time to time, we have people that just come in and they give updates. Are they always on the agenda?
They could be. I don't know if they have been in the past, but they could be.
Sometimes, you know, people just kind of come in and say, hey, I'm just going to give you an update. You know, from time to time, somebody from Greenwood Village has come in, or the High Line Canal. Fortunately, the executive director's a resident of Cherry Hills, so it's not an issue. But I'm just saying, have there ever been, or is that a possibility? And if it's not, then I don't think there's any issues at all.
I think there's a possibility, but we can also always amend the agenda. So if we, it may have occurred in the past that people just walked in and gave an update during audience participation. But if, if we didn't have, if we have advance notice, we can always add it as an agenda item.
Right.
And if we don't have advance notice, we can always amend the agenda-
On the fly?
On the fly to include an update from-
And that's good. That, that would take care of that then. Otherwise, I think all the change-
The mayor has discretion to deviate from the rules if it doesn't violate law or charter as well.
Okay.
So even less cumbersome than amending the agenda.
Do, do we get, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Did we address, because of the issue that came up with the city of Lakewood, where they come in for non, non-resi, or it could be a resident comes in and does something that, brings up something that may not be proper, whether it's racist, whether it's anti-Semitic. Do we have, we don't have anything in here, I just read through this, that we control that. Is that subject to the mayor?
Well, we have, I mean, obviously, there are free speech issues. And so people did, this, the, this policy as a result of that discussion was in an effort to ensure that the, the public comment at the beginning of the meeting that's open to anything on any subject, whether it's on the agenda or not, that that part of the meeting is related to city business in some way and not extraneous things that might be racist or, or just might have nothing to do with Cherry Hills Village.
Well, if it goes beyond free speech, are you in a position then as a mayor to cut that off? If it goes beyond free speech and becomes fighting words, for example, going back to the law school days?
Well, we kind of had that conversation.
There was, there was a, a language that said it can't be vulgar, it can't be this. And the mayor was given prerogative.
Yes.
Sorry.
And it, but it just has to be consistent. And it can't, people can't be limited or restricted purely based on the content of what they're saying. It just has to be comply, applied consistently across that. But I believe that the thinking behind this, so first of all, keep in mind that public hearings are still open to anyone. So that, because I think that's important, that people who might have any interest in a land use application or a permit, a liquor license, for example, or anything, would have the ability to come and speak. But public hearings have their own protections in that the public hearing had, the comments have to be related to the public hearing.
Right.
It can't, and in that case, you could cut them off if it's not germane to the subject. The audience participation and public comment period at the beginning of the meeting was much more vulnerable, I guess I would say, to people who are just trying to abuse.
That's a great way to put it.
And so we really felt like by limiting it to residents, you know, residents always have the right to come and speak to their elected officials about any topic they might want to bring up. And we just felt like that was really decreasing the opportunities for abuse. Because in the other cities where stuff like that has happened, it's not usually residents of those cities.
And so this should, this should cut it down substantially because, I mean, if you're a non-resident and it's a non-agenda, non-agenda item.
Yeah.
Right.
But again, I want to go to the question of, so what happens in that instance? Commander's over here, he's ready and raring to go and take the guy down. It's literally in the middle of a, a violation of that provision? Or how does it really work? I mean-
Well, I think if somebody's making threats, real threats, then yes, that if they're just saying things that are really offensive, I'm not sure that what you can do is address those comments. They have the right to say them. And you have the right to say, you know, that's, that has no place in Cherry Hills Village. And-
But if it's a non-resident, non-agenda item, and they stand up and start saying something about why the moon is blue, but they do it offensively?
Well, I guess that they would have to sign up on the form with their name and address. They could lie. If they lie, I don't know that we would really know.
Well, so we're adding a line, I guess, to our signup sheet to say general topic of your comment.
Yeah.
Which we do not have right now.
No, we do.
Well, I mean, in the old times. But I, I don't think I've ever felt that I've ever signed in specifically with that. But where I'm going on that is, it seems to me like sometimes we do hear from non-residents about non-agenda items that we find valuable as just part of general public comment. Against that, we're balancing the changing, making it harder versus cutting out something that can be valuable. And I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
But I think, Rob, nothing prevents a non-resident from calling you, sending you a letter, communicating with you in a way other than standing at the podium for three minutes during a meeting. Right? So while you are limiting who can come and speak in front of the entire council, you aren't preventing others from communicating to council. I mean, we've all gotten bulk emails from non-residents asking us to, you know, consider all kinds of things. Right?
Correct.
I, I would, you know, Earl, your question of, well, we can always just on the fly wave, change the agenda and say, I would suggest that we be very careful about doing that. Because I think then you are going to run into an issue where a non-resident says, well, you've amended the agenda for the last seven people who came in here, and now you're not going to do it for me. And I, I think you get into that very topic of, you know, not adhering to your standards, which, which creates a bigger issue. So I, I would suggest that we consider that a rare remedy. And if someone says that they want to come and speak, we say to them, well, we'd like you to speak, but you'll have to get on the agenda. And, you know, we meet in two more weeks and, you know, come and talk to us about whether you can be on the agenda or not.
Yeah, an example that a non-resident, when we had the issue with the homeless across the other side of Hampton, I could see some of those people coming to our meeting and saying, why aren't you guys against this? When the city did the homeless, I think it's in the church on the northeast corner of Hampton and, I call it a boulevard.
Yeah, well-
That's an example where somebody may come in.
I guess it is. But I, I, I would be, in a situation like that, I am more influenced by how our residents feel about it. And in the end, of course, we have no control over that. That's why, because it's Denver, it, that's not our city. But if, if some, if Denver is doing something that is upsetting the residents in Denver, but not upsetting residents of Cherry Hills Village, then I don't know that we would do anything, that we would take any action on it. So I think that's where this concept that the public meeting and the opportunity to address the entire council on any topic, that's sort of, that's why we're elected to represent the citizens of Cherry Hills Village. We're not elected necessarily to represent, right, the citizens of every other community.
I, I had a question about the agenda item discussions. And is there a way to limit that to, even if they're non-residents, to limit that to people who demonstrate a, some kind of a-
Nexus?
Nexus to the agenda item, as opposed to anyone coming in and talking about it? Maybe that's not something we care about. But I think, again, that just- Maybe that's not something we care about, but I think, again, that just limits who can come in and speak, and for any reason whatsoever.
I mean, I think that this, it did come up, because at first, the thought was that it would be for all public comment, but questions arose for things like, you know, a land use permit on Clarkson, that obviously, citizens of Inglewood, who live on the other side of the street, have a legitimate interest in decisions that we might make, or things like, of that nature. So, or, for example, any of the institutions that we have, they have, you know, congregation members, or students, or whatever it might be, that, for which those decisions are very impactful for them, whether they're residents or not residents. So I felt like we didn't.
Those I would all see as, as a nexus, right? But in theory, somebody could take the agenda item and say, and come in and do a rant, like we saw at other city council meetings, because they are speaking during, you know, at a time when it's for an agenda item, they don't have to be a resident, and there's nothing that says what they say has to be related to the agenda item.
There actually is. That's the part, yes. It has to be germane to the public hearing.
Right.
And that's where, if somebody, if.
Is any agenda item a public hearing? Okay, because this talks about.
The only time that people generally speak during, outside of the audience participation, is during a public hearing.
Okay.
There's, those are really the only two times that the public speaks in a meeting, usually. Now, I guess Mr. Blair spoke today, and that wasn't.
That's a good point, though, that Susan's raising. I mean, in other words, the rules restricting are for public hearings. You've got to, you've got to be, but there, I don't think we have that rule for agenda items. We're talking as if it is, and I think.
Say it's agenda item and not public hearing.
Exactly, so I think, I think that's actually a good point, which is to go, can we put a restriction in there and say, hey, you know, on agenda items, you can talk on the agenda, on the item. That's all you can talk about.
Or should it just say, public hearings, instead of agenda items?
I think, I would prefer it say, public hearings, and not just agenda items. Personally, yes.
So then, so then, what are you saying, then, that, that if you're a non-resident, I mean, so then, what are we saying?
So, let's say, a fencing ordinance, we had that, that was an agenda item, it's not a public hearing.
Right.
Let's say that somebody from, on the other side, from Inglewood, on the other side of Clarkson, comes and says, I don't want you building a six-foot brick solid fence on.
We can say, it's not, it's not a public hearing, you're not entitled to speak.
You know, we're, we're doing, we're serving our community, and you're welcome to call a council member. You can have feedback, you're welcome to provide feedback, but.
I'd be, my, my gut reaction is I'd be against that. I mean, which is something that you said, which is, at the end of the day, government's supposed to hear from their citizens. And what we're doing is, when we have an agenda item, that means this council is taking up the item for discussion and/or potential action. At that point in time, from my, speaking for myself, I want to hear from everybody. I want to hear from anybody and everybody.
You're saying that's okay, because it's an agenda item.
Well, yeah, but they're talking about possibly restricting it.
But I think, I, I think there's a difference, there's a difference.
Yeah.
And I, I agree with what Earl's, Earl's suggesting. You know, if the person gets up and wants to start speaking about events happening on the other side of the planet, that has nothing to do with the agenda item, and it would be a poor use of our time.
And so, and so, the question is, which I thought, at least that's where, tipped it off what Susan was saying, is, people use an agenda item as an opportunity to come up and just start ranting and raving about anything. Can we shut them off at that point in time? If we can't, then let's, then I'd, then I'd like to entertain, what do we need to do to do that?
And so, I guess, so are we making the distinction, then, about speaking during a public comment period about something that's on the agenda, versus speaking during the public comment period about something else? Like something that.
We're not talking about the public comment period.
Well, so, during a meeting, there's really only two times that people speak. They speak at the public comment period, and during public hearings.
So then, if, if they're not, if, now, we don't typically, because we did have somebody speak during an agenda item today.
Yes.
If the concept is, we are not taking comments during all agenda items, only during public hearing, then I think that provision should say, public hearing, and not agenda item.
Right. But, but, but to be fair, we have done that a lot. At the public comment period, people have commented, well, I want to talk about the fences. Oh, we're going to take that up. If you want to hold your comments until, till that time period, you can do so. We do that all the time.
Oh, no, we don't.
Oh, yes, we do.
I don't think so.
No, typically, that's with public hearings. You say, you know, reserve your comments for the hearing.
I, I understand that, I'm just, I'm just, maybe, maybe we, maybe we don't this year. I mean, but we have a lot. We've told people, hey, if you want to make your public comments when the agenda item comes up, we have done that. If you're saying right now, if you're, I'm not crazy, I know we've done that, okay? I don't want to debate that. If what we're saying now, though, is, we're never going to do that again, I'm fine with what you're saying. But I'm telling you, we've done it.
Well, I think we just did it with Mr. Blair.
Yeah, right.
He stood up, and you said, well, we're going to talk about this later, so.
Right.
Picking, picking up what, on what Katie said, though, I think there really, in my, in my recollection, there were two times when people spoke. They'd come in, they'd sign up to speak, and that could be a variety of topics. But then, if there was something particular on the agenda that they had a comment about, they could reserve the, their comments for that time. And we, and we've listened to those, and I think back, you know, back to Earl's comment, I think we want to hear from people on those things, and it's, it's, there are two different, there are two different times, and I think we ought to have two different sets of rules.
I really don't recall, so, Mr. Blair was different, because we didn't offer, we didn't offer to everybody sitting out here, would you now like to come up and speak about this revocable license? That would be as if the Highline Canal Conservancy wanted to come present to us, and we put them on the agenda, and we asked them to come speak. That's not public comment. Mr. Blair has an application with the, you know, an application for license with the city, and we asked him if he had any comments to make about it. That's not the same as public comment. And I really, we don't usually have people stand up and comment on an agenda item by agenda item basis. I, I actually don't know if I can ever remember doing that. I know I've never done.
I will say that, in my plus or minus five years, on and off five years, that generally, if people come in to speak on an agenda item, it's, we'll have them speak during the public comment early on in the meeting, and then council can hear their testimony, whatever that is. But when it gets to the agenda item, we usually don't have them speak. Sometimes, people are called up, and I agree with Earl, it's not that we've done that every single time, but that's generally the process we've allowed people to speak on a topic that's on the agenda.
And we can take, and we can take care of this, just by getting rid of the word generally, and usually, and we're never going to do that again.
Yeah.
Well, but I think the situation, but the question you got to ask is, sometimes, somebody uses public comment, and then later, when we get to the agenda item, there's discussion amongst all of us, or something that might have been said during public comment is intriguing to me. And I might say, I want to go back to the comment of Mrs. Jones that said, Mrs. Jones, let me ask you about this. And I engage the person at that point.
Yeah, you really should.
Well, I know, but, but I'm just saying that we have, in order to clarify our position, we are allowed to ask questions from the dais, and.
Not usually during a discussion, yeah, not usually during a discussion, during a public hearing, yes.
During a public hearing, absolutely. But I look at us as being even one step more informal when we're not in a hearing, to the point that I would, as I did tonight, I said, you know, I do have some questions for this applicant, and so we engaged in a little bit of dialogue. And I think that that person, you know, I don't, I guess, bottom line, I don't have a problem with the word generally. I look at the two situations that we either have, non-resident, either agenda items, in which case, we allow them to come and talk, and if they deviate from something, I think that your prerogative is to say, you've moved off of the item, please cease, and hope that they will, or else the big hook. Or if it's during a public hearing, I think we're even less able to put a hook on those people, because everybody gets to testify at a public hearing, and I don't think it's only limited to the matter at hand. It should be, it should be.
No, it's limited to the matter.
No, I think, but the problem is, is again, if you deviate from that, or you use it as a, a jumping off spot to a tangentially barely-related rant, it would be difficult to shut that person down in a public hearing context.
Well, so, let me just throw out, and I, this is just a thought. So, are we, are we attempting to solve a problem that's not really a problem? The vast majority of these incidents that we're talking about are online testimony. And it seems like maybe we're not all on the same page with the best way to, to solve it, and so maybe, maybe we just need to leave things the way they are.
Well, I will say that this whole issue was caught. This whole issue was caught up due to the fact that we may have to stream every meeting.
Yes.
And the potential for bad actors coming out could, is much higher. It does not appear from the legislation that's, that this particular piece will go through. So maybe we are kind of just barking up a dead tree here.
And maybe we are, but when I read the changes, I think they're good changes, the only question in my mind is, and again, it says, "Audience participation shall be on any matter. Audience participation on non-agenda items shall be limited to residents of the city. Participation on agenda items shall be allowed from any member of the public." And the only question there is, if they start going off the topic of the agenda item, can we shut them down? Isn't that really the only issue we have here? We know we can do it on public hearings, we've gotten rid of any non-agenda item stuff. It's only on that issue with regard to someone just saying, I'm, I'm here to talk about fences, and they go off and start talking about something else.
So I, I think, I think it's well drafted. I think the mayor has the prerogative to say, and can we turn the switch off there, so they're cut off, and then, then we're done with it. So I, I don't think it'd be an issue. I think this is well done, this is what we talked about in the retreat, and let's accept it and move on.
Well, I don't see reason not to limit agenda items discussion to the same parameters that we have for public hearing. I mean, why should there just be a nexus? Beg your pardon?
Both, public hearing and/or agenda item?
No, I would just say, there has to be a nexus.
I think this is starting to become very confusing for the person sitting in this seat, that when people sign up on this form, you know, I first have to look at whether or not they're a resident, and then what they say they want to talk about. And while we're in the middle of the meeting, I have to say, okay, this person is able to talk about anything. This person can only talk about fences, that person can, that, it, it seems like we're creating a very intricate process for something that isn't, has not been a problem.
I think you're, Mayor, I think you're, we're still saying, audience participation is limited solely to residents.
No, we're not. We're saying, audience participation about things that aren't on the agenda is residents.
Okay, well, maybe I'm, I'm understanding this. I, I thought there was a second category, which I don't think is on this page, right? Is there, is there a next page?
And we're talking about only during the audience participation portion of the agenda, right?
Yeah, public comment.
I'm not sure what, I think we're all talking about different things.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I think that second, I think that last sentence should be struck.
Well, part of my confusion is, I, I get the idea, you sign up, you, you're on the list, you come to the podium, you say your piece. That's at the front of the meeting. Now, there's a lot of times when we have an issue in front of us, and Fred will come up, and he'll do a presentation. But he's also got Mary and Tom and other people in the audience, consultants and lawyers and others who may be called upon to, to participate in that presentation. Or it may be, well, we've got so-and-so from such and such entity, and, you know, if you have any questions for them, you know, that sort of thing. It's a little gray to me, the difference between those sorts of testimonies, and people sort of popping out of the audience during an agenda item, and the audience participation. You know, it kind of looks the same, right? Somebody comes from the audience and, and gets up and does it. I, I get the audience participation structure upfront, but I'm a little confused about the testimony and how we differentiate between somebody that's sort of a legit support person on an agenda item in the.
Like, take, for example, the Land Preserve annual plan. Harold Scrimstad's not a resident.
But, but see, that's how I, I misread this. I, I thought agenda items meant, as we go through the agenda, Highline Canal is presenting, or not Highline Canal, Land Preserve is presenting something on Quincy Farm, and then people from the Land Preserve and their consultants get up and make a presentation. Okay, they may be, the consultant, for example, non-resident, but he's presenting on an agenda item during the agenda portion of the meeting. He's allowed to speak, and it should be related to the topic at hand. Or Jay may have an expert that comes in and talks about the building code. I guess that would be Paul, but.
No, but that, that.
Right? That's what I thought agenda item was supposed to be.
So this is, I think we're, we have these different interpretations of what an agenda item is.
Yeah, exactly, and I think we're using this audience participation, it's the public comment. Let's take it in the reverse, public hearing. I don't think there's a question about that. Anybody comes and says whatever they want on the topic, and if there's not, they're cut off, full stop. So, public hearing's good, right?
Yep.
Now, we have agenda items, and, and agenda items can be just a presentation by staff. It can be a presentation by experts, it can be a presentation by the Land Preserve. I mean, it can be, all kinds of people can come up and talk during an audience. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about during the public comment period. People that come in for, item number two, isn't that what it is, or three? When people, when people come in, basically, if they're residents, they can talk on, they can talk on whatever they want to. Non-residents can only address an item that's on the agenda. I don't think we're going to have, you know, something on the agenda that says, you know, burnt, whatever it might be that Lakewood was dealing with, we're going to have it there. The only question is, is if a non-resident comes up during the public comment period and says, I'm going to talk about fences, and starts talking about something else, can we stop them?
Well, and that wasn't, that, no, that wasn't what I interpreted our conversation at the retreat. What I understood, and is different, was that during audience participation, you are a resident.
That's what I figured.
Period. If you're not a resident, and you want to speak in a public hearing around a land use application, or whatever, go ahead. But if you want to just come talk to the council about some bee in your bonnet, or some issue that you have, or some concern that you want the council to address, you need to be a resident.
So, so.
That was what I thought we were doing.
Okay, well, you know, and again, I already said, I, if I understand that correctly, I'm against that. You're saying that, hey, we've got fences on the agenda. It's not a public hearing, it's on the agenda, we're going to discuss it, we have a blah, 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 blah. You're saying that if somebody over in Bellevue Village, over there on, you know, on the south side of Bellevue, wants to come and make a comment at that time, we're not going to allow them to do that, while we're taking up that issue.
At the, at the.
It's not a public hearing, there is no public hearing.
I know, if it were, then yes, but if it's not, then no.
I'm, I'm against that.
Okay, that, so this is why it's important that we understand what we're talking about.
Again, somebody who's not, let's do the hypothetical that just jumped in my mind. Somebody gets a speeding ticket, and they believe that there was poor treatment. Let's just make this completely up, not that there would ever be such thing. Nonetheless, they want to come and tell us how badly they were treated. It's not an agenda item, and they're not a resident. Is that something that we care about, that could help us within the village do our job? Let's say, for some reason, some comment about something from a non-resident that does not relate to an agenda item, will help us find something out and do something better.
The answer to that's obvious, Rob. The answer is, yes, we're interested, but Susan's point made earlier, which is, there are all kinds of ways for people to get information.
And I understand it, and, and so.
And there's also, the only reason that we're even considering putting limitations like that.
Is because.
It's the other way.
It's, so, it's a balance.
I agree.
I agree.
Do you feel that, which do you feel is kind of the more likely to happen, right? And...
I'm with Susan. As long as they have an avenue to get to all of us, it doesn't have to be by standing at this podium. I don't have a problem with that. So, I can, and, and I fully believe, we are only talking about the, the audience participation sector of the agenda in doing this.
And it would be interesting, I mean, I don't want to actually do this work, but it would be interesting, I bet, that there hasn't been more than three non-residents to ever show up within the last, I don't know, 10 years. I mean, for the audience participation period. I just don't think, um...
Outside of...
Well, I know, I know there was one when we, when we first passed, this was my first time on council, the first council, when the drone, a guy, when we did the drone ordinance, somebody came from, I don't know where he came from, but he wasn't a resident, and he had all kinds of things to say about drones, and that we were breaking the law. I mean, you know, whatever we were doing.
And we passed it anyway, right?
Right, but, but it was worthwhile to hear. That's, that's the only thing I could do. When we're, when, I believe that anytime government is taking up anything, and in this case, when we're taking up an issue, and we're debating it, making decisions about it, obviously, my residents are the most important thing to me. But I want as much information as I can get. Now, beyond that, other people come all the time for audience participation, and it's not an agenda item. They just want to come and make comments. I want to hear from residents. I don't want to hear from anybody else. That's the thing I want to get rid of.
And the other thing to consider is, we can do this, and there's nothing to say we can't make it more restrictive in the future if we find that it's being abused, which, as you said, there just aren't that many people that come and comment to begin with. But, should, should we require to start, you know, to stream our meetings, should the state require that, then we may want to say, "Well, perhaps we should look, look at this again," but...
Now, I want, I want to jump to something different, you know. Regardless of whether or not, whoever we allow this, we have a, a modification here that says they have to provide exhibits and hard copies, and it seems to me that's going a little away from the world that we live in about electronic. It seems that if something is submitted electronically, and city clerk is able to put it up on all of our screens, I, I personally don't need to see a hard copy. I think we kind of did this to make it a little more difficult, that if they have to make some time and energy to put together...
No, it was, no, it's because the technology never works. And then we spend 20 minutes of our meeting with them trying to get their documents to the clerk, and the clerk trying to get them up on the monitors and whatever.
Okay, I can, I can, I can...
It wasn't, not at all an effort to make it more difficult.
And then the other piece about that, and I understand that now, I do think, and I was one of the people that spoke out about the idea of consolidating and not combining timeframes, I've rethought of that, I've rethought about that, because many people have come to me and have said, "I'm not really eloquent. I would really like my neighbor. This is a complex item, and I'd rather not do my half and then ask my eloquent neighbor to do their half. I'd rather be able to combine and ask that one person." Or, we might have an attorney who represents five village residents. And, you know, if each one of them came up, we would give them five minutes. It sure seems a lot more understandable and flowing that I have one lawyer standing in front of me, or one representative of a number of people talking for 20 minutes versus four disjointed conversations for five each. So, I would personally, you know, I understand the idea about written submittals. I would get rid of the, the ability not to team up.
Well, just, just to flip on the flip side of that, Rob, and you're basically saying in terms of, and I agree with you, if, if the intention was really, I mean, here's an argument before the Supreme Court, "Hey, we want to make it, and you're going to be, you're going to be persuaded." I got to be honest with you. I'm much more persuaded when five people come up here, and one of them just says, "Yeah, what he said, I kind of agree at the end of the day," than just have one guy come up and say they're representing five people. I don't. I look at the people that come up, and, and that's important. I know when I was just a regular resident, et cetera, and had an issue, I'd say, "Hey, we need to get a lot of people, not just showing up, that up there talking, that go up and talk. It impacts, not just one guy."
I understand that. I'm just saying that some of the issues are complex enough that five minutes doesn't do the job.
Well, and, so, let me, let me try to some, wrap up some of our conversations. So, one thing is, as it relates to whether someone's a resident or not a resident. Earl, I agree with you that the role of government is, more information is always better, and we, as elected officials, place our own weight on, right, that, that's a judgment that we make, whether one person speaking for five minutes is more impactful to us, or five people, that's something, we each make that decision, whether the weight of a resident, uh, the, the voice of a resident carries more weight than the voice of a non-resident with an issue. That's an individual judgment, that, that's why we all get paid the big bucks. That's an argument, frankly, for leaving things exactly the way they are. We considered making these changes in response to a piece of legislation that would potentially expose us to some of the challenges that other communities are having. That legislation may or may not pass. It's looking less and less likely, but it's still working its way through the process, so we don't know for sure. And now, it's, it feels like maybe we've had time to think about it and stew on it a little bit more, and maybe we're not as convinced that making this trade-off to prevent something that might not even be that big of a, an issue for us, maybe isn't worth it. I, I don't know that we even have agreed on what resident-only comment means. And so, I'm wondering if, if we need to...
Step back.
Step back for a minute and wait to see what might happen with that legislation? This is obviously ready to go, because it's, I, and I'm not recalling, but there's a timing, I mean, we're not even voting on this tonight anyway because of timing, right? So, um...
How about this?
Well, I'm just saying 11B. I like it. I mean, I got to be honest with you. Based on the plain meaning of the words, 11B does what I want it to. Now, I can't speak for anybody else. I know that 11B does what I want it to.
So, I, I agree with you.
I think if I could just jump in, it sounds like we want to table this item for a while and maybe wait till there's some further advancement in legislative action.
The legislature ends May 8th. It'll be by our next meeting practically. I mean...
Let me see if I can do this. I moved to table the matter indefinitely.
Well, tabling it indefinitely is killing it. Do you want to kill it?
I moved to table the matter for 30 days until pending the outcome of the legislative...
How about until the second meeting in May?
Second meeting in May.
We could do it August, anytime in August.
Well, let's, let's, let's say until the second meeting in May, the legislature will be done by that point. We'll know what we're contending with. And if, when that meeting agenda comes forward, we decide that this is no longer an issue, it doesn't mean we have to, we can just consider it and postpone it indefinitely at that time.
Sounds perfect.
Okay, so a motion to...
If I can also add one item, uh...
Yeah, motion.
One comment regarding giving minutes. Uh, I've worked in the past in cities that have done that, and from an administrative perspective, it's a nightmare. Just for the fact that people, you, you get 20 people come in, and they say, "I give my minutes to Bill," and then they're gone. And, and then you, we had a policy, they had to be there when that item came up, and you would say, "Is Roger here?" And somebody would throw their hand up, and you don't know if he's Roger or not. And it became an administrative, you know, no way to handle it. So, my recommendation, if we were going to vote on that, and I don't get a vote, but is, I think it's really tough to give minutes away to other people and make it work effectively. I don't think it's necessary. Am I? Yeah. I don't, I mean, I, I agree with you, Jim. I don't think it's necessary. If the issue's that complicated, then it's probably an agenda item, and we're probably working through it fairly thoroughly. I, I'm, they should feel lucky if they were talking to Dr. Cog, they get only three minutes instead of five. So, you know, and there's no sharing minutes or any of that stuff. You either know what you're going to say, and you say it, or, you know, you're going to waste three minutes. And I, I, yeah, I think that's, I agree.
And again, you can, you can send a 10-page letter in advance of the meeting, if you, so choose. Okay, so, there's a motion, a motion and a second, to postpone this until the second meeting in May. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
And by the way, for the record, for what it's worth, I think the clerk did a terrific job with these changes.
Thank you, yes. Exactly as directed, and sorry that we're kind of backpedaling again. All right. Moving on to reports, I would like to start out with kind of a special report. Obviously, the legislature's in session. That's all still ongoing. A lot of these bills that are very concerning to us are going to be making their way through the Senate probably this coming week. And I will make an effort to testify on the ones that I think, where Cherry Hills Village can be impactful in the conversation. And we just don't know, you know, we, we just don't really know on a lot of them. They're very touch and go. If I had a crystal ball, I would say that something is probably going to pass in all of these cases, and we'll see what that ultimately is, and whether that's something that we feel we can live with. And if not, then, of course, the legal avenues are what are the next step.
Although I do get a, I just get a kick every time I read it, and, you know, build more houses, build more houses, just continues to go, and doing anything to make it easier from a building defect perspective goes the other way.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just unbelievable how...
I agree.
Am I, am I wrong that I did see that building occupancy numbers passed and was signed today?
It is. That, that is...
So, that one, that's one.
Yep, that's one.
Um, that is already going to be affecting us. And so...
Officially signed, yes.
The other ones may be out there still with a sort of an uncertain resolution, but occupancy limits are gone now.
Yep. Except for health, safety, and welfare.
Except for health, safety, and welfare, which is a hard one to argue in a 15,000-square-foot home.
Yes, it is. So, there's, that's still consuming most of my time. But, on the more positive side, we have, as you all know, a really tremendous staff at Cherry Hills Village, and I think that's evidenced by the number of people on our staff who have just been here for a very long time. And among those is our very own Jay Goldie, who has been with us for 20 years. 20 years, and he's still here.
Oh, gosh.
He keeps coming back. Jay started in 2004 as the Parks and Trails Administrator, then moved to the Director of Public Works, and of course, now serves as our Deputy City Manager. He serves on the American Public Works Association as Board President. He led the city to become only the fourth accredited Public Works Department in Colorado, and only the 94th accredited Public Works Department in the U.S. and Canada. He has a master's degree in public administration. He is credentialed, a credentialed manager with the International City Council, City County Management Association, ICMA. He's a certified public manager with the American Public Works Association. And while at Cherry Hills Village, he, he has really left his mark on our community. He helped with the effort to create our own Parks Division when we withdrew from South Suburban. Completed the construction of this building under budget, no less. Completed the construction of John Mead Park and Allen Hutto Commons. Organized and completed the design of the Public Works Facility, which is located in Sheridan. Completed the construction of the Joint Public Safety Building across the street. Really left a fingerprint on the city. It's basically every construction project we've had in the last 20 years. Completed the construction of the Hamden Underpass Trail Connection and Bridge. Completed the formation of special districts, and oversaw the completion of the Charlestown Park Undergrounding and Quincy Undergrounding and Southmore Undergrounding projects. He's also completed the installation of our EV charging stations out front. Made sure that our roads are always well-maintained, and in fact, has the, our city has the third highest-rated roads program in the entire state, not surprisingly. He's responsible for a variety of citizen committees throughout the years, including the Undergrounding Committee, the Blue Ribbon Panel, and the Quincy Farm Committee, and numerous capital improvement projects, road improvements, sidewalk construction, drainage improvements, installation of water lines and sewer lines, park improvements, trail improvements, and the list goes on and on, including installation and removal of art pieces. He's completed several traffic calming projects and improvements, and helped write numerous policy updates pertaining to the Public Works Department, and right now is in the process of completing the city's fiber and cell study. And if that weren't enough, he implemented the snow plow, the snowplow map and the GIS system. Been a very busy 20 years. We really can't thank you enough, Jay, for all of the service that you've given to the city and to our residents. And in honor of your 20th anniversary, it is my distinct privilege to present you with, and I'm going to try not to drop it before I even hand it to you, this lovely plaque? Statue? I don't know. Token? I'm not sure what you call this.
Yours.
All right, we need, we need photo ops.
Yeah, I'll get one, and then I'll get one with everybody. Okay. Susan, Jay, when you first came to work, you had a lot more hair. He was a lot taller and had more hair. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. It has been a pleasure working here, or I wouldn't keep coming back. I think I've outlived five city managers. I sat in that position as interim for a year. No, you know, what really keeps me coming back is the residents. My interactions with the residents, a majority of the time is so positive. We tend to remember those negative ones, but they're such a small portion of what we do, no matter if it's public works, community development, police. The residents have always treated us great, and it's, it's been a great 20 years here. I can't believe that it's been that long, but my kids are groaning out of the house now, so. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
No, thank you, and congratulations, and I guess congratulations to us for having you with us for 20 years. So, I can't top that in terms of the mayor's report, so we'll start down here for council, Rob.
Two quick things. One, I have attended the last two Airport Noise Group meetings, and consistent with some of the reports about the value of attending them from the past, Cherry Hills Village has made one noise complaint to the roundtable during calendar year '24, and I think during calendar year '23, if I remember, it was something like nine total noise complaints. 100% of what they talked about did not involve Cherry Hills Village. However, with that said, the question came up of, they didn't ever send us a bill, and the reason they never sent us a bill, I found out. And that is that they had run leaner than expected for the last couple of years, and they had money in their budget enough that they did not feel a need to assess fees or dues for 2024. So, hope springs eternal from the standpoint that maybe they'll bring something up related to us, and I'm willing to continue to go, because it's free. And apparently, I have no life. Secondly...
Sorry, if I can just interject really quickly. The, I think what has happened is that the aircraft noise issue in Cherry Hills Village is not a result of Centennial Airport anymore. It is absolutely DIA, and over my house today, it was literally constant.
I would agree with that comment, because I'm not sure if it was... anybody who thinks that they want to make a complaint to please continue to do so. I'm, I'm just saying that as a result of the lack of noise complaints here, they don't necessarily address concerns. We don't have a noise monitoring system this far north into Cherry Hills or things, I think the furthest north one is approximately Bellevue and sort of the east side of the Tech Center, if I recall. I think it's important to say that the, the issues of the noise roundtable are not limited only to noise. I think it's also, there are two real issues that are going on. It's apparently the, flight schools are incredibly busy, and they're doing a whole lot of touch-and-go landings and takeoffs. And so there are a lot of flights, or planes, that are in the flight pattern at low elevations. And they tend to be prop planes more than jets that get up and out and have sort of the latest and greatest. There was a report at one of the meetings about, they have convert, have installed an unleaded fuel pump at the airport now, and there's a great incentive to try and move a lot of the planes into the world of unleaded fuels. And the areas that are in close proximity, and again, I don't think this necessarily is a Cherry Hills Village issue, but it isn't to be diminished, that there are a lot of pollutants discharged of leaded gas. And they have monitoring stations in different areas around Centennial Airport that are hitting critical numbers on lead levels. And so the neighbors that are in very close proximity are exceptionally concerned, both noise, but also environmental impacts of lead. So those tend to be a little bit about what they seem to be focusing on. At some point, they would like to build a new control tower. The price for the new control tower is something like $160 million, and they do not yet have that funding, so that won't be happening anytime soon. But I'll continue to attend and keep us posted on what kind of goes on. I do think that when I showed up two meetings ago and asked for my Cherry Hills nameplate, they were like, wow. And so they were, they were glad to have us, I gotta tell you. They were very, very glad that we were there and interested. My second item, I'll just quickly tell you, I, we already heard a public comment tonight from one of our residents about the flock camera. I wanted to thank you, you guys have been right on it in terms of response and everything like that. I think it just goes a little bit to the question that we might want to consider and work with the police program, a little bit, having a little bit more say rather than turning over to the flock folks, sort of the first determination of where we place our cameras. Because maybe we can head off some of these potential complaints a little bit. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks.
I don't have any report, but maybe the commander could. I am interested in the comments that were made. I know those flock cameras basically are, they're license identifiers, they're cars. I mean, I thought they were primarily on the roads. Our resident, when she spoke, had made it appear like it was monitoring way broader than, than just the roads. I don't know if that's true, if that isn't true, but I am curious, because I do think privacy is an issue. But I'm just, it's something I hadn't really ever thought about before in terms of those cameras. So I'd be interested in just hearing comments, either when it's your turn or now, or whenever you'd like to do it, so.
I can address it now if you would like. So the flock cameras do not record in video, they only take snapshot pictures as a vehicle passes in front of it. They do not even, they're not even set up to take pictures if it's just a person or people walking by. It's only when vehicles pass by. The typical installation and where the cameras are positioned is strictly into the roadway. And so the resident that spoke this evening, I spoke with her husband, I can't remember if it was yesterday or if it was, it was late last week, he came into the police department and I spoke with him at length, assured him of, of this same stuff and showed him actually pictures from that specific camera, that they're focused entirely on the street. It doesn't show any portion of even the front walkway in front of their house, and only a small portion of the driveway or the, the walkway, the curb line on the opposite side of the street. But I completely understand their concerns.
Yeah.
As I explained to the husband of the lady that spoke tonight, we've already been in contact with flock representatives, and we're already working with them to see what options we have available to move that camera.
Which is great. I mean, and we're always, always concerned about any of our residents' concerns, and we were happy to hear her concerns and hope that they're addressed and we can provide her some, some confidence going forward. But we're also concerned with the facts, and so it is not a true statement that at the end of the day, it's, it basically is a widespread, real-time analysis of what's going on in people's properties. It doesn't know when people are at their properties, when they're coming and when they're going, et cetera. That actually just isn't true.
Correct. And like I said, it does not record video and it does not record any audio features as well.
But, but let me just, am I right, though? I think you and I from, this happened, I guess, what, a month and a half ago it first came up, when I got a call from one of the residents in our neighborhood. And, you know, we talked a little bit about it then, and, you know, I believe that they have a belief that this doesn't just shoot license plates, it shoots them in the front yard, they have a feeling of being watched, et cetera, et cetera, as the rest of you, because I was late, can't hear tonight. The idea, though, it does shoot more than just license plates, it does shoot the ability to say it's a, a blue Ford Taurus or something, so...
It can differentiate that, but it's only, it's only capturing an image when a license plate goes by, or when a vehicle goes by.
Correct.
So there's, there's other things that it'll be able to interpret, yes, but it's only when a vehicle passes.
Yeah, so the important part is, it's not when you're walking down the street, it's not gonna take any picture, let alone a picture of a person. It really does, I mean, the moment I got the phone call from our resident, I talked to chief who directed it to you, you called me back, we were on it within about an hour, I'm guessing. And, you know, I, I think right as a result of that, you all said that you would look into it, and I don't know quite what generated another call to me earlier in the week, and your visit, I don't know if the fact that it's still sitting there was taken as a, we didn't address it, but we made it very clear in those discussions that this is something that is working its way through the process. So, you know, my kudos to the police department for, for not taking this as anything other than serious, and you guys jumped right on it. So thank you.
Thanks, thank you, and I have nothing else.
Thank you.
On that same topic, do we do any pre-selling of what we're doing, you know, so that folks kind of don't end up coming to their own conclusions about what's being viewed from the eye in the sky, you know? Yeah.
I mean, we are having conversations during our community outreach, like our Coffee with a Cop events, and anytime we're interacting with the community. I believe we put something out in the crier about our flock cameras, but other than that, no.
Yeah, probably too many, too many copies of George Orwell and all that. Not much news. Dr. Cog, the, there's a lot of procedural stuff in revising this plan and so on, but a couple of things that would affect residents. The toll system that exists on E470, there are, there's been a fair amount of work already done, and looks like we will start to join the sort of Midwest region of tolling authorities, which really goes all the way up into New England. There are different groups of, of tolling authorities that share information so that, you know, in fact, your license plate can get read in some other state and the bill comes back through to your account here in, in Colorado. Today, we're sort of isolated, but that, that looks to change considerably as, you know, in the next couple, year, year and a half. The other thing I picked up during the, the comments from the different organizations is RTD not very happy with the legislation that's being advanced around improving their board. It's, well, it'll make it more professional and more nimble. The more professional part of it's kind of an insult all by itself, and the nimble, it's, yeah, yeah. There's 15 on the board, and there's what, about 60 legislators, legislators in the area, and, yeah, all that. So they're not sold, and I think it's causing a lot of consternation and distraction and all of that within RTD. Otherwise, that's all I have.
All right.
No report.
Counsel's request? No report. City manager?
Sure. I'd just like to extend one more minute. Congratulations to Jay. I've been in local government for 40 years and, in fact, was a Director of Public Works at one time, when I was on the dark side, but I, I just want to say that he's one of the best public works directors I've ever worked with, and I'm, I'm just really proud of what he's done, and he's my go-to guy here at the city. So if I need something done, that's who I go to. He knows the city inside and out, and so I just want to extend my thank you.
Dr. Workman?
I want to echo the mayor's comments about the state housing legislation. We are getting closer to the end of the legislative session. Now that the budget's passed, things are gonna start to move really quick. We're doing our best to stay on top of it, but it's gonna, it's gonna, it's really gonna start to get real as things go to the Senate. Additionally, on your dais this evening was a one-pager report on the Arapahoe County Hazard Mitigation Plan. As you're aware, we are in the middle of our CRS audit as well. One of the things we have to do for, for that CRS audit is give counsel a report on our status with the Arapahoe County Hazard Mitigation Plan. So that's what that is. If you want to talk about it in more detail, let me know, and we can chat after, or we can schedule some time. Suffice it to say, we're compliant, we're doing what we said we were gonna do, and it really is just a formality to check a box for FEMA. So that's what that is.
We've got a couple of events before your next meeting, so we have the Art Commission event this Saturday, we have Drug Takeback next weekend, I believe it is, and then the Parks Commission event, May 4th. So have those on your calendar. As you might have noticed, the Art Commission put up their new art exhibit today, so that's from the Denver Botanic Gardens, from one of their classes, so, yeah.
And the Leon Preserve has Earth Day on Sunday, right? So it's art event on Saturday, Earth Day on Sunday. Over here, let's, we'll go down, Director Farman.
Congratulations to Jay, and no additional news. Thank you.
John Mead Park, our wetlands mitigation is complete, except for the plugs. The plugs will be in, hopefully, at the end of next month, and our contractor will come back. But all of the grading went well, we made sure everything was surveyed in and, and where it's supposed to be, so we should be able to get our Lomar now and also meet our No Rise. So that's wrapping up. Counselor Wheel will be happy to know we have our first electric riding mower in. It'll be out here soon, thanks to the Mowdown Pollution Grant through this, through the Rack for that. We've got all of the other equipment ordered. In total, it's about $65,000 worth of electrical parks equipment that the city, our share is $15,000, so that, that will be a great addition to our, our crews this summer. So we'll be trying that out, it'll, it'll be different, trying to figure out how many batteries you have to have with you. And, you know, they're gonna have batteries here in the lunchroom that they can switch out at lunch, and so Jeff has done a really good job at trying to foresee, you know, I think we spent just as much money in batteries as equipment, just to make sure that we're not going out of commission, so that's all I have.
Let me know when it comes in, I want to take a ride.
All right.
Good evening. Just share about a couple of community outreach events that we had last week. On Tuesday, we had our Coffee with a Cop. As you all may know, we're holding those quarterly, so this was our one for the first quarter. Our next one is planned for July 10th, if you guys would like to come out and join us then. And then on Thursday evening, this past Thursday evening, we started our Police Citizens Academy, our first one. So that was the first of a nine-week course where we have 24 of our residents signed up, come out and learn every week about different aspects of police and different, different things that we do within our job. It's gonna be a really good opportunity for them to experience a lot of really cool stuff. So very engaging group, and it's gonna be fun. And that's all I have.
I would like to make a personal request that Officer Tuco join us at some point. Would really like to meet him. I did think of one other thing as we were talking about Arapahoe County. At the last, Arapahoe County mayors, managers, and commissioners, or whatever that group is, Arapahoe County will, has not managed to solve their budget crisis that they've had for years, and is potentially looking at some sort of ballot initiative for this November. I think they're currently considering two different options. One would be debruising, because they are not currently debruised, and the second would be a sales tax increase. They've done polling, they've talked with, and of course, the polling results are kind of the opposite of the feedback that you get from the municipalities within the county. Polling steers things towards a sales tax increase, and input from local governments is, steers more towards debruising option. They truly have not decided yet, they have, they're undertaking sort of a massive outreach and communication effort to get people up to speed on what the issues are and what the budget shortfalls might look like in real terms for people in the county. And they've asked for whatever help we can offer in terms of helping to get the word out and getting input from our residents. And so I'm, we'll probably be looking at ways we might be able to do that. I suggested that maybe we could offer them some space in the crier to, you know, provide some information about their plans and maybe a link to the website they have to get more information and to provide input. I'm sure our citizens will have feelings on the issue one way or another, so. And I believe if that's, if there's nothing else, then we will stand adjourned at 9:47, or sorry, 8:47. I was about to say 9:47, I've, I've ruined my track record.